The site, but. If if anybody has any resources for signal processing in APL, I'd be interested. I did a quick search, but I didn't do an exhaustive one. So like I said, I'll put something up on the site, but. Feel free to add something in the chat if anybody knows anything. Thanks.
It might be worth searching for the kind of things you would. Use for signal processing like. Look on APL Wiki and stuff like Fourier transform or Kalman filter.
Yeah, true.
Solution. Interested to hear what you find.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so. I remember we were up to. Partitioned and close. Has anybody skipped ahead to figure out what that is?
So I mean.
What button do we press for enclose again? Let's see. Sorry.
Oh, so for me, it seems like it was doing, say, if on the. Left hand side you have one, two, three, it would enclose the first one, one time like. Three elements on each side, one, two, three on each side.
Well, could you explain maybe the version we've got here? Does this make sense? We've got oh, one, oh, one enclosed, one, two, three, four.
Oh, yeah, sure. Let me. Zero, one, zero. One, let me make sure it does what I think it does.
So it's giving us two, three in the first cell and four in the second cell. Apparently.
What is um? Hmm. Okay, that does my my understanding was wrong.
Okay, all right, all the more interesting.
Oh, well, okay, yeah, I played with it a bit and thought I knew it. It did.
I'm getting a sense of what it is. It's looked like the ones are defining groups. So it's taking where the first one is and giving us the. Numbers there. The letters in this case, then the second group is defined here, letters there.
Yeah, if you. Did you look on the APL Wiki?
I haven't done anything at all. This is the first time I've.
Okay.
So.
I was just looking it up in the background. I I think it's starting to.
They just called it.
Explain basically what you were saying.
Didn't they?
It looked like it was a pretty good definition, at least starting out.
Okay.
That second paragraph. Oh.
Yeah, it indicates where divisions begin. Cool. It seems pretty straightforward. So each one is the start of a new. Division. The APL Wiki example is a bit. Clearer, I think.
Or at least that one is.
Yeah, that's what I mean, this one. Okay. So then they're saying. Some dialects by which I assume they mean. Dialogues included. Okay, so that's just saying, create. Two partition could make this the second. Have two partitions after the first and then three partitions after that. So it's just creating some empty. Partitions. All right. Well, that seems straightforward enough. Sorry, keep moving along then. Looks like the next one is left shoe under bar. Which is written as. Shift C, I guessed right, shift C. Okay. Starting to get the hang of this. Oops. Monatic left shoe under bar. Means nest. Let's check APL Wiki as well, shall we?
It's like.
Yep.
It has some, it's kind of like enclosed with some extra logic so that it doesn't nest too many times. If you nest a nest a nest, it doesn't do that.
Okay. Let's have a look at this example, shall we? So this is. That's H, isn't it? And I think this means is it an element of? And so this adds up. How many times an E appears? In each word? Oh, okay, it's counting out the words, no worries. But if the user only gives one word, it will count the Es in each letter because it's going each. Yes. You can apply nest. Okay. So. They've got some examples. I quite like that they're saying like an example of why it would be useful. In APL Wiki. Even if the example is a little bit complicated. Now that's the same as normal enclosed, right? And we can check that. By using. The tally thing. No, the other thing, match. Okay, they're the same. Is this one different? Ah, no, this is, this is different. Okay. I see. So what's the rule it's using? If Y is simple, what does simple mean? I think simple means that it's an array that doesn't contain any arrays. So I think if we did. Two, three. Re shape. A O to six. That would, yeah, that's the same because this is simple.
I I don't know, I didn't type down where I got the definition, but a simple array is an array of depth. One with all primitive values such as a string or array of numbers.
Oh, perfect. By the way, what happened to our thing that shows like? The little squiggle or thing that tells us, you know, the and shows us the little arrows. Is that some different kind of boxing? Oh, we've got min. I don't want min max. Okay. I think that tells us whether something's simple. Yes. Okay. So if I do this. That's considered, so I think squiggle might mean simple. And this thing might be not simple, maybe. All right, great. So if it's just a, so basically if it's just an array. Like or a tensor, I guess. Then it's going to return it unchanged. Oh, no, sorry. Yes, I see. If it's a. If it's an array, then it encloses it. Is that what it's saying?
Yes.
Okay, so. If it's an array, it encloses it. Okay, so they're right, right? So that's enclosed. So if it's an array, it encloses it. Anything else, it does nothing at all. Okay, so there are the three possibilities. So I guess we should show them.
And left shoe would have done the same thing, no? In fact, I just tried it on sleep. In the example, it also worked.
Right, a left shoe does the same. In the case of an array. But not in the case of a scalar or a non-simple object.
Oh, so.
So that's why you can see here, this is the same. But this is not the same. As you can see, these are different.
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, so this guy, in the case of a scalar, right? Enclosed does nothing. Okay, so this is called nest. Okay, so they're exactly the same in the scalar case and the and the simple array case. But they're different. In the. Nested array case. If it's already a nested array, it doesn't nest it anymore. Great. So then. Diatic. Is partition rather than partitioned and close. Oh, I see. It's something about. The the partitions are now defined in a different way rather than ones and zeros. It's whenever the left argument. New division. For an element is greater than the number that's left. So here's a new. Spot. Cool. Okay, and you can skip by setting a zero. Seems powerful. Okay, so by definition. You can split on spaces, for example. So here is a place where it's gone down and therefore it's going to skip. The fourth element, which is a space. And then this here goes up again, so it's going to create a new partition, a new group. Okay, so this is. I guess. Maybe a good time to talk about forks. Because their example here is a fork. So I guess let's start with. Does this example make sense for everybody? Does that make sense so far?
It doesn't make.
Cool.
It does make sense, but it seems like. You know, it's quite involved what it can do and the differences between the. Operators that we've seen here on close. I'm just curious how much of this was in the original specification of APL? And how much of this evolved over time? So essentially, how much of this is coming from the Canai Person's paper? It's. Just curious.
Yeah, I assume this classic edition thing would be closer. There is a like a. APL dictionary on the J software website. Which I guess would be a good place to answer that question. I thought. Maybe I'm wrong. Call it a change, APL dictionary. Yeah, dictionary of APL.
Oh, wow, cool.
Okay, so here's all the symbols. I guess.
And and the way.
There's an enclosed here. Oh, except it's called superset. That's interesting.
So the way he arrived on this was even without before he, you know, there was no implementation initially, right? It was just.
Well, this.
Trying to define the notation.
This was written in nineteen eighty seven, so this was well after there was an implementation.
Right.
Yeah, the original notation. I don't know what the kind of official. Oh, all right, I guess going back here. Here we are, a programming language nineteen sixty two. So that was a point when there wasn't an implementation.
Oh, cool.
And I think this would be interesting too, because this is where they actually designed IBM computer systems using APL as a notation.
Yeah, that's that. This sounds like very interesting read.
At this book I have.
Sharing this.
This book I have.
What is it? Or it's it's elementary functions?
Yeah, it's. It's basically a math textbook for designed at kind of high school level, if I remember correctly.
Wow.
Let's see, one semester precalculus course. Yeah.
Wow.
So he worked with the Fox Lane High School teachers. So, yeah, it's like kind of normal staff circular functions inverse reciprocal. Slope. Exponential polynomials. But. Using.
It is so cool.
This notation.
The the environment or, you know, where this was devised and.
Yeah.
The the law of APL is.
Although interestingly, he's got. He's got superscripts, you know. Here. Which is not what we're using nowadays. We're using star. Although, you know, these reductions are the same, and it's got subscripts. That's also interesting. So anyway, so yeah, it starts off by talking about programming stuff, and then he's got a chapter about functions. All right.
This was fascinating. Thanks so much, Jeremy, for sharing this. Now I know where to where to look them up.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, the J software website, jsoftware.com/papers has. Yeah, a lot of. They seem to spend a lot of time, you know, scanning in and even most caring. A lot of stuff.
I guess we can do this second example, can we?
Yeah, so that's why I was saying we're going to do forks next.
Oh.
Yeah.
Same left, does that work?
So that's a fork, forks. Okay, so we've already talked about one fork. So the basic kind of idea that. Adam said. That maybe we can steal it directly. So I'm not going to do as good a job as he did. Where did he? Mention? Fox. Oh, maybe it was after the last study session. Yep. Okay, well, let's try his example. So maybe. If. We could do. The reciprocal. Of three. Plus. E to the power of three. And so here we've got. F plus G where F is reciprocal and G is exp. And then we're adding them together. And so according to his example. That should be the same as. That. Which it is. Does that make sense? So first applies this to three, then it applies this to three, and then applies this to the results. So the example we saw a little earlier. Was. The very famous definition of the main, which is the sum. Divided by. The count. So here's a function.
I think we might be in the situation where we cannot see the.
Right, how's that?
Oh, yeah, 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 that's.
There's a function. There's a function, there's a function. So make sure you put this operator with the function on its left. Plus slash. There's the middle function, there's the right hand. So that's F. That's G. And that's what we're using instead of plus using divide. So the sum divided by the count. So that is equal to two plus five plus eight plus nine divided by four. Does that make sense? So plus slash of two, five, eight, nine, divided by tally of two, five, eight, nine. And so something that's very interesting about this is that if we define a function, and this is something thought that Aaron Chu calls talks about in his. Arraycast. Interview. We could define. A function called main. And that's how we would define it, right? And we could run it. And so the interesting point, though, is that. The word main. Has the same number of characters as its definition. So like. Why? Why define a function for this rather than just use the definition anytime you want to use it? Because that way. You're being more explicit. That's a very good way to spell main because it actually tells you. Exactly how to do it. So like, it's a totally different way of thinking about software engineering. Is. Yeah, not to create abstractions when you end up with an interaction. Where the number of letters in its name is the same as the number of letter, number of characters in its definition. So I think that's interesting. So here's another interesting example. Okay, so before we do it. We need this one. So. This one, which is. A little thing pointing rightward. Where's that? Yeah. Okay. Backslash. Okay, this is called right tack. Makes sense. It does look like a tack pointing right. Right tack. And monatic is called same, and it's what we would normally call the identity function. And it just returns whatever it's passed. Okay, not much we can say about that, right? Diatic. Is called right. And it always returns its right argument. Okay. And I am pretty sure that left tack will do the exact opposite. Except monatic will be the same. So left tack. This vertical bar makes sense. Starting to get the hang of their mnemonics for their letters now. Generally, you shift to get the kind of the other version of the same thing. Okay. Oops, I forgot to change this. Okay. Those are pretty straightforward, yeah? So this next one is a fork. Which. Okay. This one here. Might help to see each bit separately first, maybe. Oh, this is a diatic fork. I think a diatic fork. I'm pretty sure, yes. Or a diatic. Diatic fork. H. Of F, whoops. F. And. G. Past. The left hand side. And the right hand side. So. This one's pretty straightforward, that's just gonna return the right hand side. So we can then. Combine those together. To say. Left hand side. And then the enclosed. Then the right hand side, which I don't have to put in parentheses, but I'm just going to. Okay, now look, these are the same, right? Because this fork means that the left hand side and the right hand side are passed to this. And they're passed to this. And then this takes the two results. So this, this fork. Is something that will separate the string by spaces. And again, you could. Well, not just by spaces, but by whatever's on the left. So we could create a function for that called. You know, split. But the name of the function, which should be more characters than the three characters it takes to define it. Does that make sense?
Wouldn't it be more readable to use alpha and omega in such case? This is very cryptic.
I mean, I mean, everything's cryptic when you don't know it, right? I mean. I mean, if you do, if you do any work with math notation and math notation, we. You know, it's very cryptic. So, yeah, sure, it's very cryptic when you don't know it. I think it's. Error than alpha and omega once you know, because there's less to. At least to me, less to keeping him, keeping my head. So the alpha and omega version, if you didn't want to do a fork. Would be.
You're replacing space.
Split would be defined as.
Yep.
Um, alpha. Not equal to omega. Alpha. Omega, whoops.
You essentially have to do this in your head. If you want to, if I, right?
I mean, kind of. Like. Yeah, same thing. I think once you get comfortable with abstractions, you. Kind of don't, like. It just slots in there. I feel like this version, you have to do it in your head. Whereas this version, I think you could read it as like fairly directly in English. As, what's this name of this character diatic? I don't quite remember. Whatever it is, match or whatever. So it'd be like. You know, you could say like, I should actually say the right words. Unique mask. Okay, so if you say. Unique mask partitions. The right hand side. You know, I think that's. Probably something that one could. Come comfortable thinking about that directly.
I can see the.
It reminds me, if you're surprised the other day when I mentioned, you know, my daughter. Yeah, to understand APL than the normal math notation, but like, I think we're just kind of like reflecting our own. You know?
Yeah.
I actually think, yeah, so. I don't know, like, I'm not. Maybe I'll speak by any means, so. All right. I think that's super interesting anyway, it's fun. I, I think that's what's intriguing to me, like, it's interesting research to kind of think about this alternative notation and. What it might mean to be comfortable with it, and you know, hopefully my, my daughter will teach me. That. By. By doing it. Okay, let's do these errors. I'm gonna do them before partition and stuff because. I want to segue into fork.
So we're using forks and trains interchangeably or trains or.
So trains are, great question. So trains just refer to a bunch of functions next to each other. With no other punctuation. So a train, you know, an example of a train. Would be. The one that we did for the power operator.
Yeah.
Super fun. At least I thought so. This is a train. Now this train. We had. Uh, function, operator, function, operator, function. So it's different, right? So I guess this is a function, and then this is an operator, and this is a function. I think you'd still call that a train. Another example of a train. Would be.
We did a two train today.
Did we do a two train today? When was that?
Yeah, it was, I think, under. Diatic partition.
Diatic.
The one that you copied from Adam. Oh, here. The line thirty one. That's a two train, right?
There's no train here.
No, this is three train, no?
Uh, this is a three train, which is called a fork.
Yes, that's why, sorry, thirty two.
I thought you're looking for a two train. I just tried to come up with an example of a two train. So a two train, for example, two trains are much easier to understand because they're exactly the same as. Beside or jot. So if we did. Uh, to the power of the reciprocal. We don't even need that. Right, then it's gonna just, you just read right to left. One over three, e to the power of that. Right, so that's, that's the same as.
No special rules, right?
Yeah, no special rules. And in the diatic case. Then. Like that. Um, then I believe it does three divided by three. First, and then does e to the power of that, so that's gonna be e to the power of one.
Okay, that's interesting.
And then this case is different, right? Because now it's treating it as this. So that's gonna be three to the power of a third. Which would be the cube root of three. Now in J. This means something else. This means something else, just to display. Um, it would be the same as.
Three on both sides.
It would be the sense putting three on both sides, and that in J is called a hook. So Adam's point is that we don't need a special thing for hook. Because we can always use. We can always use same. You know, we could put it there, or we can put it on the other side, just to say. Yeah, or you can use total diuresis. Yep. Okay. Um, so yeah, I think trains are just bunches of functions next to each other. Um, okay, so let's do the arrows. Which I do see a lot. So it'd be nice to know what they mean. Presumably, they're gonna call this up arrow, one would hope. Needs a space. Up arrow, how about that? All right, and it's called, oh gosh, what's this again? Think Alc version is two, isn't it? One, okay? So it's called mix. Does anybody know why one would change this Quad ML? Thing, I remember it refers to kind of like the version of the language or something. Next, what take? I like, maybe it's just for. Kind of compatibility. Mix. Next hip hop. Okay. So. It looks like it's doing the opposite of that. It seemed something to kind of go the opposite direction before, didn't we? From here to here.
What's the rule of this, I'm curious? What's the rule of this rank of this?
This one here, so this is gonna be, so the shape of this is gonna be two, three. Um, where else the shape of this is two? Does anybody remember how to go from the matrix to the? Two enclosed versions?
Wasn't that the left shoe?
Let me try. This one?
Destroyed, I don't know, I'm guessing, either just wrapping them, no, that's not what you want.
Um, we could do that with each, I guess.
How about row to reshape?
Um, that's not gonna be the same thing, because you want to actually. Enclose them. Oh, yeah, and each. Oh. What about the rank operator? Which one's the rank operator again? Is it this one? Yes. Okay, I'm sure we had a better way than that. All right. So. Have a look at what it's defined as. An array whose items may be uniform in rank and shape, or they might differ. Okay, let's ignore the non-uniform case for a while. So then R is an array composed of the items of Y. Assembled into a higher ranked array with one less level of nesting. Okay, that's exactly what we saw. So. We started out with a rank one array, and we've got a rank two array. And we have one less level of nesting, so the depth used to be two, and I guess the depth is now one. If I remember the definition of depth correctly. Uh, if they have different ranks. Each item is extended in rank to that of its greatest rank by padding. With leading ones. All the rank is padded with relating ones. Okay, so for their example here. Yeah, so this is a. Vector, this is a scaler, this is a scaler. So this would get padded to become a one element vector, this would become a one element vector. So presumably, if we did that manually. We would get the same thing. Um, and then why? Yep, that's the same thing. So that's what they're saying is being done implicitly. Okay, so if they're different ranks, you get the ones. Okay, then it got different shapes, which they do. So now it just padded. With the corresponding prototype. I'm think that a prototype like is the kind of like base default value of a type. So for a number, for the prototype is zero. I wish these kind of things had hyperlinks, though, to definitions. So that's why we ended up with zeros. So in other words, we could do the same thing. By doing it manually. So there's the same thing. Okay. So let's do the diatic version, shall we? Oh, there we go. Yeah, so if anybody can figure out how to go from the matrix back to the. Array of arrays more conveniently than my ugly. Version, let me know. Oh, there's things in the chat.
You can do it by providing access to the shoe operator.
Okay. Great. Um, thanks, Fish. So. Although Adam's told us to kind of avoid access, but. There we go. Hey, I'm trying to go the other direction. I'm trying to start with the matrix. Oh, yeah, which is what this has got it. And then Molly's got an example. Okay, so what this is gonna do is it's gonna be a three by three matrix containing one, two, zero, three, zero, zero. Four, five, six. And I don't think these parentheses are needed, are they, Molly? Hey. Thank you. All right. Take. Well, this looks nice and easy. In other languages, I think we'd call this head. Oh, or if you do negative, it's tail. I like that. I love that they don't create more functions than needed. Why not just use negatives? Okay, so that just takes the first N characters or the last N characters. Okay, so let's create a matrix. Of three by four. Of iota twelve. And. Um, why do they go straight to the hard one? Let's just start with, okay, what if we do that? And let me print this out, shall we? What's the keyboard shortcut for quad? Here it is. Bar. Vertical bar. Wait, I confused. I thought that was. That's that. Uh.
It's an L.
Oh, it's an L. Thank you. All right. Great. So this is gonna grab the first two rows of the matrix. Cool. And this is the first two rows and the last three columns of the matrix. Okay, so here's a nice easy way to. Index into contiguous sections of. Of an array. Is everybody okay with that? So two minus three is gonna be the first two rows, last three columns of this bit here. All right. Well, I'm curious about what the other error is gonna be.
Oh, uh, one other thing was taking more than the amount that was in the array.
Oh, thank you. Taking more than the amount in the array.
So like five, five rows, for example?
Okay, so I get spaces in the case. Oh, I think that's gonna be called its prototype. And for the matrix. Then it zeros. Okay, again, the prototype. Cool. So yes, I think the space is the prototype for a character, and zero is a prototype for a number. Okay, is that all that, um? Have we missed anything else, Molly, or you think that's it?
Um, well, uh, in the case of, oh, here, here's an example that I wanted to share. Put it in chat right quick.
Thanks.
Cause I feel this behavior a bit odd. Or not what I expected.
Uh, okay, let's see what you got. Okay. All right, so you've got, um.
So the. The empty one.
Oh. You're getting too many things. Wait, what? Okay, so it's, it's repeating the first one.
Yeah, the first one.
With prototypes. Okay. Okay, I'm not gonna leave this in here, because that sounds like a weird edge case that people can figure out, but that is interesting and surprising. All right. Much battery have I got? Ten percent, okay, shouldn't be too bad. Um. Presumably, if I type down here, I'm gonna get the down error.
The down error does the thing that you wanted to do.
Oh, hooray. Yes, it does. Lovely. Great, let's deal our matrix then. Uh, and it's U. Huh, how about that? Well, that's, that's exactly as it should be, okay? And you can also do it with an access. Okay, and then drop. That's great. Everything except for. Wonder how close we are to finishing. There's still a lot of symbols we haven't done. Feel like we've done a lot. Okay, everything except the first four. Now, what's this? Okay, makes sense. Everything except the last five. Yeah, that makes sense as well. Everything except the first two rows. And everything except those rows. Oh, well, actually, I'm not sure what this is gonna do. Uh, let's see if we can figure it out. Everything except these is something of a weird shape, so what's gonna happen? Huh? Oh, I see, none of the top two rows. And none of the last three columns means you're left with this. So this is actually doing something. Yep. A bit different. So we get rid of all those columns, and we get rid of all these rows, and you're left with just the number nine. Okay. Those sound like very useful things to know about. Anything else to chat about before we? Go? Pretty productive day.
If all the symbols, I will encourage other people to try to do the competition.
Sirata, did you use the arrows much in your competition?
A lot.
A lot, great. Yeah, I feel like I see them around. Sorry?
Excuse me, but is the competition available again?
You're very hard to hear, Reddit. You're very.
I, I think it should be better now.
Oh, yes, that's much better, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, it's switched to, uh, so I, I'm wondering if the competition is back available again for, for this year. The twenty twenty-two.
I, I don't know, but based on the test case, um, they show in the screen, um, you should be able to, um, try. Um, working on it as well.
Ah, perfect.
Yeah. But, but when you submit, you, you'll find out, um, they actually have more edge case, um, in the test, so you, you get your head around it.
And you can always do previous years' ones, as Sirata has mentioned before.
And, and there are write-ups on the forums. They are awesome, so. You know, combining, like, trying to do the competition with, uh, looking at the forums after a couple of tries. That, that, that sounds like a. Like a really nice way of learning this stuff.
Yeah, even.
I don't see a way to, I don't see a way to see the current years' ones, because it's, it tells you. Yeah, I don't see it on their webpage. It might be. Yeah, I might have to wait.
Um, but last time they had the PDF download, maybe I can post it, um.
Yeah, please do, because I don't see it.
Yeah, and then you can just base on the test case, they normally have four of, um, test case, and then you, at least you have some parameter to work on.
Or alternatively, maybe like post, uh. Notebook or something with, uh. You know, with the questions, but not the answers or something, I don't know. Yeah.
Yep.
That'd be cool.
Okay, yeah, I would, bye.
Thanks. Bye, everybody.
So much. Have a good one. Bye.
Thank you.